Here tonight, we are going to go ahead and have a pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Fowers, and then the reverence by Councilmember Hill.
Would everyone stand and repeat after me?
Our dear Heavenly Father, we're grateful to be gathered together as a community tonight and as a city council meeting. We're thankful for the opportunities that afford us to meet in such circumstances and the freedoms that we enjoy. We're thankful for our great country, the United States of America, and for the Constitution which governs us. We're thankful for those that lead and guide us and keep us safe. For the armed forces, please protect them and their families, and watch over those who constantly keep over us. We pray a blessing upon our country and our nation, and upon our state and our community that all will go well and things will be taken care of and safe and protected. We ask a blessing upon those local authorities, our police officers and our fire department, that they will be blessed and watched over as well. We're grateful for all those who serve, those who give their time and their talents and their energies for the betterment of us and the betterment of our community. We ask a blessing upon us individually and collectively that we may abide in peace and harmony, and that we can find ways to build each other up and love each other and treat each other as neighbors. We're grateful for all we have and pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. We have a couple of upcoming events that I wanted to announce. We still do have some of our Hooper Tomato Day 100th Celebration shirts if anyone is interested. We have a few hats, some shirts. They are $15 apiece. We had a waiting list and we've pretty much gone through that and we still have a few extra. So if any of you didn't get one, then see the office come in during office hours, Monday through Thursday, 9 through 5, and you'll be able to get those. Another announcement, and hopefully that you are aware, we are starting to do a monthly newsletter that is online at our hoopercity.gov. And we will have that done. Really appreciate our city recorder, Morgan Yeoman, for doing that. And so keep up to date with all our current events, and that's also a cost savings by being able to have it online. And we can also do that every month. And so if you haven't checked it out, make sure that you do. Another announcement coming up is on Thursday, November 20. Some of you, if you are within a certain distance, have probably already received a postcard announcing the scoping meeting of SR 177. That is going to be held on Thursday, November 20, from 5 o'clock to 7 p.m. at Rocky Mountain Junior High. And there will be representatives there from UDOT, from the consulting firm that's going to be doing the environmental study. And so because of that, we are not going to hold our regular work meeting that night. That's the same night that one of our city council meetings would be held to give all of you an opportunity, if you so desire, to go to that meeting at Rocky Mountain. So put that on your schedule. And also that night, at 7 o'clock p.m., we are going to have a city council meeting. We are going to have Tina Cannon, who is the state auditor, is going to come and do a special presentation on tax increment financing tools. So plan on that, on those nights. We might still have a couple of agenda items, but you can watch for those to come. But for sure, her presentation will be on November 20 with that scoping meeting ahead of time before that. The first thing on our agenda is going to be public comments. So I want to just give you the ground rules like we always do. Come up to the microphone, state your name. You have a total of three minutes. Morgan will have the sheets that will hold up when your time is up. We ask you that when she holds up that your time is up, that you will please stop. I also ask for you to be respectful. We don't want any clapping, cheering, yelling, any of that. We ask you to be respectful in your comments. If you are not, or you do not abide by these rules, you will probably be asked to be escorted out. And so we are going to go ahead now and turn the time over to for public comments.
Amber Kelso. Dear friends and neighbors, I address you tonight as someone who loves this city and believes in its people. But lately, it feels as though we've forgotten who we are. The air feels charged, almost like the crowds that once filled the Colosseum of ancient Rome, cheering, jeering, and judging from the stands. In those days, the mobs roar for blood, could decide who would live and who would die, often without the truth of the story before them. We see echoes of that same fickleness today, as many rush to condemn this council without first understanding what has led to this moment. And just like those ancient crowds, our passion can turn us cruel, and our fickleness can destroy what we claim to love. Take a moment with me and look at these people up on the stand. These are not strangers. These are your neighbors. They are your friends. They are not career politicians. They are the people who sit beside you in church and who volunteer at your kids' ballgames. They are people of character and conscience, and we, all of us, placed our trust in them to make the hard decisions to protect this city. Yes, the mayor was elected, but so were they. Every one of them took an oath, an oath of fidelity to this city, not to one person, but to the people. And that oath means they must protect this city from harm. The provision we are looking at today exists for a reason, so that no one voice can drown out the others, and so that truth and ethics could always have a seat at the table. It is the council's duty, not their choice, to ensure that the government operates as it should, lawfully, transparently, and with accountability. In our form of government, we have what's called a weak mayor system. This means the mayor is not an unchecked ruler. She is a part of a balanced structure, one that depends on cooperation and respect among branches. When the balance is broken, when interference, falsehoods, or unethical behavior threaten the proper functioning of our city, this council is obligated to act. To do otherwise would be to betray their very oath they swore to uphold. This is not betrayal, friends. It's leadership. This council is made up of five distinct individuals. They are not bound by friendship, nor have they always agreed in the past. In fact, their voting records show independence and diversity of thought. Yet despite their differences, every one of them has reached the same conclusion, that this was the right course of action for our city. That unishe should tell you something. They are standing courageously for what is right, even at their own expense, even when doing so brings anger and misunderstanding. It should tell us that this isn't about politics. It's about principle. And yet, look at what they face, a mob-like wave of anger and insult. They are being shouted down by people who have never once come to a meeting, who haven't taken the time to hear both sides, who choose instead to believe whatever appears in their social media feed. The council hasn't played those games. They've refused, and yet somehow they are the ones being condemned. People cry out for unity, for an end to the online hatred, but then they turn around and praise and elevate the very voices that keep spreading it. My friends, that is hypocrisy. You cannot call for peace while rewarding those who bring division. You cannot demand truth while refusing to seek it yourself. The truth isn't always loud and it isn't always easy, but it's worth seeking. I hear a lot of people demanding that the mayor be given a chance to do what she is elected to do. I'm asking for the same courtesy for the council.
Ms. Up, thank you.
My name is Kathy Verhooven. We live on Seven Acres on 4300 West in Hooper. We're across from Emma Russell Park. Our driveway is a quarter mile, and our house sits way back. The driveway crosses over Howard Slough, and Rory City has utilities along the way because they have water that dumps into Howard Slough at that point. In September, graffiti showed up on the Rory City Utilities. In the packets, there's photos. Since on October 21st, Rory City has scrubbed the graffiti. It's been visible to us and also to the neighbors to the south of us. It is my understanding that some of the most effective methods of deterring vandalism and graffiti is increased lighting, surveillance, surveillance signage, and increased law enforcement patrols. This is where, this is on Hooper City property, within Hooper City, and it's where the trail ends, for now. In addition to the graffiti visual assault, we've had three of four tires on a personal trailer on our property slashed, fencing damaged trespassers on our property, and one trespasser arrested by police, all since April. Vandalism has also occurred this summer at Emma Russell Park. I had heard that the AYSO trailer there was tagged, as well as their tires slashed. Just wanted to bring this to your attention, and if there's anything that can be done with increased lighting or surveillance in the area to curb vandalism and graffiti, probably by next spring, summer, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Rick Wells. I live here in Hooper. And I think you guys already know what the situation is. Nothing's been done about it. I want to thank Deborah and Bryce. They both personally came to my house, looked at the situation, and they both had the same attitude. This is not acceptable. It's not within the ordinances. And we went through four or five things. This has been going on. They moved in Christmas of 2016. 2017, it started. The county people have been out. They've given warnings. You need to take care of the situation. They have for two or three months, and it goes back to the same thing. I realize that there's a loophole, and the people got a business license. I understand that. For a restoration of automobiles in a slash agricultural residential area. But the other situations have not been complied by. The old mayor, Corey Green, went over there, told them the same thing years ago. You need to take care of this. All they did was give them the middle finger. I came in, I talked to Deborah. She said, "Well, on this situation, they don't have a complaint about it. You need to fill out the form." I fill out the form about a week and a half ago. I haven't heard anything. But the situation is, the compliance people with the county already told them three months ago that they had to take care of it. And they told them, "We're not doing it." On the complaint form, I wrote down the ordinances. This shows where they're out of compliance. And I'm just wondering, where are we at with the compliance people at the county? Ms. Mayor, do you have any idea?
That would be something I would have to follow up with on Monday. I don't have that access.
Okay, because I know they work on Friday. They're working five days a week. But once again, I want to thank Deborah and Bryce for your concern with the matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I can't tell if that's, you can't hear yourself in this microphone. My name's Cassie Brown, and I'm a Hooper resident. I've lived here since 2007. My frame of reference for attending this meeting tonight is I've been a municipal government employee for over 20 years in another city in this area. And I watch things that happen in Hooper, and it reminds me of so many things that have happened in the city that I am employed by. And it makes me scared for the future of our city, or just concerned about some of the things that are happening. In about 20 years ago, the city that I worked for, the city council, attempted a similar action to what you're attempting tonight, which is to take away some of the mayor's powers. It was referred to as a change in our form of government in the city I worked for, which it wasn't that. But people didn't really understand what the changes constituted. And so that was, it grew legs and it ran that way, right? And then there was a group of citizens that filed a referendum petition, and it put everything in that city on hold for almost a year, until the petition made its way to an election and it was voted on. And it was defeated by the residents almost a year later. And it was just such a painful time for that city, and it took a lot of years for the city to recover. There are still people that refer to that situation now, almost 20 years later. And so I would just want to give some caution that before you make this decision, really carefully think about the long-term unintended consequences. It could be very damaging to the city. And if it's not based on some illegal action that has occurred, or an ethics violation, or the mayor somehow violating her oath of office, you really need to carefully consider if you should do this. Because just because you can do it doesn't mean that you should. And that should apply to anything that we do in our daily lives. Thanks, Morgan. I would just want to say one more thing. Just because people are paying attention to this subject matter doesn't mean that they're an angry mob. I think most of us don't attend city council meetings on a regular basis because we have voted, and we've elected, and we trust you. We know that you're reasonable people. We know that you want what's best for the city, and that's why we're not maybe actively participating all the time. But this is something that was serious enough that people took note and wanted to attend and wanted to participate. And we just want to hear what's happening and give our input. So thanks for listening and thanks for this opportunity, and I hope that you carefully consider your decision tonight.
My name's Kyle Cook. I only have three minutes, but let me first just say thank you for your willingness to serve. It is a thankless job, and many people don't understand how difficult it is. Having served as a council member for eight years, I do understand. And if I were to summarize my three biggest takeaways from my time serving, they would be, no one is going to like 100% of your decisions. A high percentage of citizens do not truly care about what is going on in our city unless they are directly impacted. And three, you get to see a different side of people you thought you knew. And I'm sure that goes both ways. I'm going to focus my remaining time on the third item I've mentioned. Now, I fully recognize that I do not know the entire story or how far it goes back, but based on comments from the community and what I've seen on social media, my perception is that since before the last election, animosity between some family members has grown into a cancer for our community. I'm not here to take sides or say who is right or wrong, but I can tell you that there are council members, planning commission members, and members of our community that have grossly misused words like corruption, unethical, and illegal. If you don't like what someone is doing, focus your energy on good ideas or creating value, rather than tearing your opposition down. I was part of the city council that organized the current form of government because we understood that constituents expect the elected mayor to have a vote. The mayor has more meetings and has more interactions with constituents than anyone else, and it is common sense that the mayor, whoever it is at any time, has a vote or a say. A family feud that has worked its way into our community should not lead to a change in our government structure. Lastly, three members of the council will not be here in January, and citizens have elected three new faces. Because of the previously mentioned disagreement, the election results are evidence that the current tone of our certain council and commission members is not desired by the majority of our citizens. Do not change our form of government. Please allow the new members to see if they can change the tone and work together. If we want to throw words around, many citizens, myself included, could say it would be corrupt or unethical to make a significant change this late in your term, that your constituents have shown through the election results they don't want. And just as was mentioned before, the citizens do have mediums to counteract that if those decisions are made. And with everything that's going on in the world, I would strongly recommend not putting our city through that. Thank you.
She wants to speak in the microphone. My name's Kristen Craig, and I just live off of 4000. My husband wanted to be here, and he was unable to, so I'm just going to read a couple of things. Let's see here, so... Says, "I would like to address specific issues. Hand the motion to adopt the ordinance to shift/remove merril powers and effectively modify the merril position of our government. I believe the move like this should be reserved for the most extreme circumstances, such as ethical violations, immense risk to city government or employees. Before any such action is taken, I believe citizens and candidates and communities, community members alike should be asking important questions. And so these are some questions I would like to ask the council. What specifically has the mayor done that weren't stripping the powers or changing the structure of city government?" Do I ask the questions and then, or I don't know. I'll just ask questions if you guys want to answer. If you would like to answer, we would love to know. How does this proposed change benefit the citizens of Hooper? What risks does this pose to the city's stability, our residents, and to the accountability of the elected officials? If merril powers are shifted to the council, who exactly will receive those powers and what powers will they be? Why alter the form of government without a vote of the people who originally chose it through the ballot box? Why revisit an issue that failed to achieve unanimous support earlier this year, especially just days before three new council members elected by the people are set to take their seats? And is this the best solution to solve the problems, concerns that the current council is seeing? Why does this vote need to be taken place now? Wouldn't it better serve the community, get a fresh set of eyes on these issues with newly elected officials, and give them the opportunity to do the right thing? I just think that you guys have some insight on what's going on, and we just probably don't have enough information. And so we just really need some transparency so that we can understand what's going on. And so those are the questions we have. Thank you. I know you're trying, she's trying to fix it. Apparently, it's missing a screw. I'm sorry. She does work with us a lot.
We realized that right before the meeting. We will get that fixed. Thank you.
She'll be happy to help you.
Okay.
Larry Rolpato. Kristen only read a portion of what David Craig wrote, and it's posted on, I know, the Hooper Tomato. If you really want to see who this guy is and what his comments are, you really need to read what he said. "When I signed up to run, this position did not include the powers of a mayor. I knew there were problems amongst you six, and I felt that I could help bridge the gap. Now you're asking me to add the duties of the mayor to this list. I don't want him. This government here in Hooper was established with cool heads who prayed and thought this out and knew what would work. Two nights ago, 1,224 Hooper residents voted in three new council members who they have trust in, that can help shape this government back into place. And now five of you, who do not trust the three coming in, obviously, are trying to go against at least 1,224 residents at the minimum. The timing is horrible. With an election that is over, we, the residents of Hooper, don't even know why. You know, where's the transparency? I wish I knew why you're trying to take him from her. I don't. Vote as you will. We'll enter this government with our hands tied. It's okay, because I've handled a lot worse situations than this in my life, and we'll overcome it. You'll still be my friends, no matter how you vote. That's fine. We'll move on. Bottom line is, I totally disagree with what you're trying to do tonight."
My name is Cassie Belt. I am a citizen of Hooper City. And I would like to touch on, I may not have come to any of the meetings lately, sorry. But I have actually been trying to take a more thorough interest in our city, right? And what is going on for over the past year. Been trying to watch the videos when we've had them, being able to go out and find them, things like that. So first of all, I would like to question, you know, I'm following along with Mr. and Mrs. Craig's and pretty well everybody else that's stepped up and spoke to. How does this benefit our city and our citizens, right? With removing the mayor's powers? I understand there are things that happen behind closed doors that we are not privy to. But where is, like everybody else has said, where is the transparency to the community when we have selected you guys to vote and represent our voice, right? So without that transparency, how can we know that what you're doing is truly our voice, right? So why now? I know this was voted on earlier in the year, and it was decided to postpone it. Why now, instead of waiting for the three new council members to come in to be able to truly understand what is going on and make a decision at that point, where they're the ones that are going to be performing the duties, not you? What factual data constitutes the removal of the mayor's powers, right? Is it, sorry, delection of duties, fraud, waste, or abuse? You know, and that comes back to the transparency for us as the community to understand why we're trying to do this. And then, so back to, so the vote of the citizens, you know, there was a poll that was posted. I don't know who posted it, but I looked at the results, you know, as of this morning, or, you know, it was probably about 10 or 11 this morning. And the results were not in favor of this vote, you know, to remove the mayor's powers. So I think that goes back to, you know, doing what's right, yes, on, for our community and our citizens, and how does it benefit our citizens? So, thank you.
Okay, if there are not any other comments, we will, oh, okay.
My heart's pounding. Any of you guys' hearts pound when you walk up here? Oh my goodness! It's like getting up to bear your testimony in sacrament or something. Anyway, my name's Taylor. I'm a resident of Hooper out in Ross and Ranch. I had this whole thing that I was going to talk about, but it's gone. No, I wanted to second the questions that David posted. How does this benefit the city? Is this, whether you have a family dispute or not, just like in school or your job, you leave it at the door. You are here to do a job. You have been elected to do a job. So put your feelings aside and do your job. And if you can't do your job without your quarrels with other members or family members, whatever it is, then we, the people, will have to hold you responsible because ultimately you are public servants. And it is our job to hold you responsible for what, we elected you to do your job, and we trust you. But if you're not going to do that, and do this two days after a, after a vote with three new council members coming in, again, the timing is awful. It's absolutely awful. But no, the mayor is elected to do a position, and it shouldn't be a ceremonial position. It shouldn't be. You should have powers. So that's, I really, you need to, really need to think about this. Is this best for our city, or is your ego going to get in the way? That's all.
We get your last name. I'm sorry for our record. Oh, you have it?
Nelson.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Mark Wayman, and I too appreciate what you guys are doing. Nearly 25 years ago, a small group of us got this city started and donated more hours every week than I could probably ever tell you. There's so much wrong about what's going on in this council. You guys, somebody's pulling strings, and you guys are doing a lot of very, very wrong moves, in a lot of our opinion. I, for one, having poured my heart and soul into this city 25 years ago because I wanted it to be something, know that there was a lot of us that didn't agree on many things. We had a big obstacle to write all of the documents for the city to start with. And we sat in that little old Radio Shack building, freezing our butts off and, or sweating to death, ironing this stuff out. And you guys, you guys are acting like a bunch of damn kids. It's pathetic. I agree with almost everything everybody said. The timing is horrible. There is no reason why this should be going on again. I, I just, I'm just appalled, I got to tell you. It's pathetic. And I hope you get it figured out, and I hope you listen to what everybody's saying here because if you choose to do this tonight, there will be ramifications to it. Telling you straight up. Just grill the hell up and get this city going. Let the mayor do her job, whoever the mayor is. Work it out. Work with the planning commission, and quit the damn fighting. Work it out, work with the planning commission and quit the damn fighting.
My name is Braxton Kelso. I wasn't planning on coming up here and you'll have to forgive me because I am really bad at public speaking. There's been a lot of counter argument to the proposal that's been brought towards the council and the mayor tonight. I think it's important that everyone should consider what has brought us here. This has happened three times that the council has considered this action and every time the reaction has been, let's postpone it. There will be serious effects on the city. I don't think any of them or any of us really want that and even fully know what those could be. I do agree that there should be transparency for sure. Everything should be laid out and maybe not everything can at this time. Who knows? I think it's reductive to reduce their concerns to a list of family ego telling them they're acting like children. They are adults. I'm sure they all have very, um, I'm sure they all have good reasons for why this has been brought forward three separate times. Now, I'm not going to say that I'm very good with government or anything, but I know, and I don't know if this is the right decision, but if, you know, we believe these polls online or what things are saying, those could be loud majorities, or you could find yourself in your own with your group of people. And if this is truly an incorrect decision, then there are things in place like referendums and that will repeal it if it is the true will of the public. And I'll just leave it there because I'm scared.
Good evening. I, uh, too did not come prepared and, uh, expect to speak, but thank you for having me nonetheless, too.
Will you state your name?
I'm sorry, I'm Nathan Ashby, a, a citizen in, in Hooper. I believe that, uh, I, I can't imagine a, a circumstance where all of you up there are, are serving um, for any other reasons than, than good intent and appreciate your guys' service and that. However, I do think that it's pretty clear that this timing for this is, is not appropriate. I think that, uh, the majority of the citizens are not in favor of this. And I just think that that's something that you guys should really, really consider before moving forward with, with that. So, again, I'm, I'm a, I'm a voice in opposition of, of moving forward with removing the, the mayor's powers. And just hope that you guys really take another look at that before you decide anything. Thank you.
Jayden Ropelato will make this short, just as I am, but you know, I've lived here 90% of my life or more. Um, just recently moved back in January, we built a house by our family. Growing up my whole life, this, Hooper was a city to brag about. There are so many good things that everyone was so happy about, loved it. In the last several months, when asking other citizens or people what they thought of Hooper, the most common word I've come up with or heard is embarrassing. There's a lot going on, whatever it may be. Feuds between council members, mayors, whatever they are. It has led and taken away from a city that was bragged about often and you never heard bad, but now the words I'm hearing is embarrassing and sad. Those are the two most words that I hear repeated when asking about this once great city. It's still great. I'm never going to move. I have no plans of it. This plan is to be my home forever. I don't believe splitting powers is the way to do it, to make it great again, to make it a place that people brag about and search out to live. That's all. Thanks.
Paul B. Kraft. I don't talk a lot either in church. I'm half up here for Kami. I don't know if she's here, but I do know how my neighbor feels. And I know how I feel and, and like many of these people, we have heritage here. It was my third great grandfather Gilbert, Gilbert Bellknap that petitioned the United States government to settle out here in Hooper. So I, I for the last 20, I don't know how many years I've lived out here, but people ask me where I live and I say God's country. And I still say that and I still mean it. But, you know, I, I was fortunate. My father-in-law was the mayor of South Weber for 18 years and council member before that. And he was a, a good old boy. But a good old boy for the citizens, a good boy for the developers and many of you have seen what South Weaver has done the last 30 years. There's still farmland there, but a lot of it's houses and that community has developed, you know, just how you can't stop people. People want to live there. I recently, my company, I've worked for every city from Garland to South Salt Lake. Whether it's a big job, a public works job, that's normally all we do. But a small town like Bothwell, where it's a big project for them and you'll meet not the mayor, but you'll meet the council members. We just finished a, we've been in Riverdale all summer. And you meet the citizens too. And they're all there. They all come out and you see these cities that work together, you know? When we paved, when we paved the road a month ago, they're all there to see it paved, to make sure the citizens are happy. And that's what, that's what this is for. That's what you guys are here for. And so I don't think voting the mayor's powers away from her is what the citizens want. Regardless, and I, I, as I came in here at six o'clock, I saw the demeanor of the mayor and had I been in her shoes, I don't know how she could have talked to any of you guys. But did you, did you not feel it? So I don't know what's going on, but if something bad has gone on, then people, the citizens need to know and this can't happen. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Uh, Ray Hancock, uh, recently elected council member number three. I was feeling a little left out here, so I figured I better chime in. My biggest problem right now, and you're going to do what you're going to do. My, my opinion is not going to sway you, but I really believe we're doing this backwards a little bit and I would really love to see the order of this reversed a little. And I know part of the reason why we're doing public comment first is this could go really long time. But it would really help the public comment section of this if they knew what was going to happen before they commented. And right now, they're all kind of in the dark and don't really know, are there valid charges, substance, sustainable charges against the mayor? That's what everybody here would really like to know. Unfortunately, nobody does know that at this time. I would suggest and I will pursue in the future to get the order of this reversed a little bit to where we deal with the issues first and then take some public comment so that the citizenry actually knows what the heck's going on. Because right now I'm pretty sure there's only five or six people in this room that really know if this is valid or not. And I would really love to see that changed. And I promise you, I will work towards getting this uh, in a better order to me because this, this just doesn't make a lot of sense to me to be doing it in this order. I think we, and I know it was changed a while back and I'm not even privy to how it was changed or why, but we need to change format here, people. This is not helping the public here because they don't even know what's going to happen. We're asking them to form an opinion on it. Um, which may be not even necessary. We don't know. So my suggestion would be, hey, maybe we'll do some campaign reform and also I promise you, we're going to do some campaign looking into in the future as far as length of time of campaigning. And maybe number of signs and stuff like that, because, uh, cities around us have cut some of the stuff back a little. I think we could probably do the same.
Good evening. My name is Sierra Helsom. Also a resident. Um, I've grown up here my whole life. Most of you have known me since I was born. Um, and I would agree with that. I am, can't even say that I'm either pro or against this addendum and this change because we don't know what it is. Um, I can say personally that I attempted to contact each and every one of you and heard nothing back. Um, wanting to know what the charges were, what the evidence was, what the reasoning is. It's not that all of us as citizens are against this. And it's not, uh, against Sherry, against the mayor, against the city council. It is what is best for our city. And the fact that we haven't been provided any information, any claims, any documentation, any threats. If something illegal egregious happened, we as citizens have a right to know what's going on. That should be documented. And if it is, why aren't we moving towards removal rather than just changing the duties? This is where we have a right to know what's happening behind those doors. I understand we vote you guys to represent us, but we have a right to know when asked what is going on behind the decision-making process. And what I am asking of you tonight, because as Ray spoke, we don't have a right to say anything after those decisions start happening during the rest of the meeting, is that you present the information and the documentation to us, give us as citizens an opportunity to look it over and let us as reasonable adults decide for ourselves whether or not this is action that should be taken. That we have another city council coming in, but we are reasonable people and want what's best for this city. But we cannot decide that and you guys cannot decide that for us if we don't have all the information that we need moving forward. We've been called angry mobs and to told to put our pitchforks down simply for asking the hard questions and asking for transparency of this group. Emailing each and every one of you for that. So all we're asking is not to have a fight against each other, but to put the information forward and let us decide. Let the citizens make a decision with all the information moving forward. We are here together as a community. Most of us were raised here and have lived here our whole lives. And I would agree that it's been an embarrassment to live here the last little while. And I really hope moving forward, we can do what's right rather than attacking one another. Give everyone the information. Don't call us an angry mob for asking for transparency. We want what's right for this community, not what's right for one person. Thank you.
I hate to get up here. I really do. Um, one thing about Hooper is you've got a, my name, my name is Brian Murrow. Okay. So, um, when you're, when Hooper's got a, a panel of five people, city council members, we're looking at you. And they control a lot. The mayor can have an idea, but the board of five control what happens. So they're very powerful. What we're doing now, or potentially what we've heard is being proposed is to strip her power and then give it to the panel of five. Now, what's kind of weird about that? Out of a panel of five, three positions are being switched. So we've gone into election, the controlling parties lost. And now we're switching it over. So now we're changing the rules. We're in a lame duck session. And they're open to do whatever they want. So how much damage can they do to the city between now and January, when the new people take over? If there was true grievances or legitimate concerns, they should be able to be brought out to the public, make them aware of it, and then let the three new council members plus the two prior ones address the concerns. If they are legitimate concerns and not just made up problems, then it could be faced. But here you've got a council stripping powers, losing control, new board members coming in, but it's putting them in a couple of months where they can do a tremendous amount of damage to the city. Because, I mean, so when you look at the optics, it looks like just vindictive, like they're just kind of doing this to kind of spite. And it's not really in the best interest of the city. I mean, if there really is a problem, build your case, let the people know about it. And then there's nothing to be ashamed of, right? But you're making a lot of, you're, you're changing the fundamental structure of the way our city governs by changing the rules, putting it all to the council. And right now that council is people that aren't even going to be there in a couple of months. So why would we do that? We wouldn't. Unless there's other reasons behind this season, why that's happening. So that's all that I want to say. I, I just think there's some, it needs to be thought long and hard before this happens because the optics are horrible.
I, as many of these people have lived in this area.
Will you state your name?
Yes, Janet Price.
Thank you.
And I have lived here most of my life. And, um, I know some of these people personally. But I'd like to say the person that's in question today has done a lot for this city over a long period of time. She has brought about many things that have been welcomed and, um, she's brought a lot of joy to this city. And I think there's a lot more to come too, but to take something away without any knowledge of the people that it's representing is wrong. And that's what I'd like to say is that I like what she has accomplished in the past for the city and for the community. Have, thank you.
People that know me, I don't like doing this and I hardly ever do it, but I do feel like I have to do this because I live here and I love Hooper.
Will you state your name?
Yes, I'm Michelle Christensen. And I've lived here for many years and I'm married into a family that has been here in Hooper, the Beus family for many, many generations. But I think I'm going to state how I feel and I wonder if that's how everybody else feels. Coming into this election, there was contention. The citizens of Hooper knew there was division because of the contention of, of the siblings running against. And then you had people that were for Dell, then you had the people that were for you. So I think what's hard is I feel like you never came in and had a fair game. I feel like you were under a microscope. And so every little change or every little mistake, because I'm going to say, nobody's going to be perfect. Will there be errors? Absolutely. You know what? It's a learning curve. You've never been a mayor before and I'm shaking myself over here. But I want to say every mayor that probably has sat in your seat has made mistakes. I guarantee it. Nobody's been perfect. But I just want to say as Hooper, we want to make our, our city whole again. And you know what? The next mayor that moves in down the road will actually make mistakes too. So the, the biggest concern is, is are we going to put, we know what the citizens are wanting. We want our, our community to be whole. We want it to be healthy. But you know what? If it's not something that is um, against the law or something like that, but maybe little mistakes, we need to just turn the page or let us know what that is. Cause I do feel like if there is something serious, then we should know about that. And I do feel like a lot of us feel like we are in the dark. And so if it is mistakes and you just aren't liking it or pride, I know pride is an ugly thing. And sometimes we ourselves, there's been times I never thought I had pride and then I look back and I think I had pride. But sometimes we do have to realize that we do like to be right because it's not our idea. We like something else, but you know what? If it was just a simple mistake, we need to let that go and just make our community whole again. So, but I do want you to know, I appreciate all of your service. I would never want to be in your seats because I think it's, I mean, it's you're damned if you're doing, you're damned if you don't. So I do appreciate you standing up for our community, but I do feel like we need to make the right decision of what of our community, what we need to be able to move forward.
Okay, I'm.
Hi, I'm Jessica Smith and I'm from Hooper. I did not grow up here and I'm the one. And I'm the one responsible for your emails being filled up, just so you know. I also want you guys to know that it's not just people from Hooper that are watching this. It is other city councils that are watching because you guys are setting a precedence. They're going to, if you guys do this for generalities and not specifics, they're going to take this and do it too. You guys have got, you guys are setting a stage that you don't even know. It could sunset was here last time watching. I know there's other city councils that are watching. They want to make sure that you guys are doing this the right way and not the wrong way because you're setting a precedence. So even if you're not concerned about us, let's be concerned about everyone else. Because we can't, we can't just remove people because we don't like what they're doing. It has to be illegal. And it has to be fraudulent. And also at this time, last time, there was a lot of, nothing was quite specific. There was a lot of generalities of, well, at this meeting, this happened. This time, I'd like you to have specifics. Because we don't want to hear about generalities. So please have specifics when you bring this to our attention, but don't ruin the form of government.
Okay, seeing no further comments, we are going to move on to our agenda. The first thing on our agenda, then, the consent items are going to be the approval of the minutes. And this was one that council member Hill wanted brought back on. It is October 7th, 2025. He wanted these minutes brought forward for additional review. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I say the wrong date? August 7th?
August 7th.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
So this is line item eight, B as in boy. I know we briefly talked about this last time, but this was a couple of months ago. So if my memory fades me, please help me out here. I'll just read the last part of this paragraph. This was a discussion of the Terrastrada LLC development, section B. The last part of the paragraph reads, council members raised concerns about costs, resident impacts, affordability, and the need for more information. Suggestions included inducting the resident survey to gauge support. No motion was made. The council agreed to gather more data before deciding. If my memory serves me correctly, that's not really what happened in that section of the meeting. We did raise questions. We had a lengthy discussion with Terrastrada about many things, including the fact that they didn't entertain any of the suggestions from our planning commission to change their project. We never really got an answer on that one, but I feel like some of the council wanted to make a motion on this project and we were abruptly cut off and we never did agree to what's printed here on the minutes. Does that serve me correctly? So I would recommend or motion that whoever does our minutes, go back and listen to this part of the tape and write and correct the minutes that are on this eight B paragraph. Because if my memory is right, I believe Reed, our city attorney, interjected and said, it looks like the city council doesn't have enough information and we'll just move on, is what I remember. Anybody else? What shouldn't have happened? Anyway, that's what I got.
Okay, so we can do that. We can have our deputy recorder review those minutes and come back to the next meeting with these minutes. And then we could make the motion to approve them at that time when you see if that was done correctly. Is that?
That's what, yeah, that's my motion.
Does that need to be an official motion to do that? Or is that just something that we can have brought back? Okay. Okay, we will plan on doing that. Morgan will let her know. Okay, so the next thing in is the approval of the minutes dated October 2nd, 2025. Have you all had a chance to review those? Minutes is, does anyone see any corrections, additions to those minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes on October 2nd, 2025.
The motion was made by council member Hill. Is there a second?
I'd second that.
Second is made by council member Fowers. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next thing then, we don't have any public hearings tonight. So the next thing on our agenda is, under our discussion items, is we need to discuss the preparation for a new parks impact fee facility plan. So this was discussed several times during our budget meetings. Starting oh approximately in March of when these meetings were held. On May 1st, Taylor Stauffer, our city engineer, came and did a presentation where he talked about this. Our parks impact fee study has not been updated since 2003. And what goes into an impact fee study is it is for new construction within the city. You first have to do, it's called an IFFP, an impact fee facility plan. And then they do that plan. And after that plan is done, then you have an IFA, which is an impact fee analysis. So in order for us to be able to do and begin this, we needed to, we're going to notice this, that it is going to start with this. One thing about this is the city received a grant in the amount of $88,000 to do this, to upgrade. This was a grant that was awarded through the Utah Outdoor Recreation. The local match was $17,600. This is something that really does need to be done because as we mentioned, the last time it was updated was 2003. And so as new construction goes on in the city, you cannot increase your impact fee without first doing this impact fee study. So this will be noticed that we are starting to do this study. Once the study is completed, then we will have a public hearing and then you can come back and hear what that's going to be with the impact fee analysis and how much that will be per parcel or per building lot, or if it happened to be on a commercial, whatever that was. So does anybody have any questions on, on what this is? You know, at that same time, when he came in May 1st, and you'll probably remember this because we went over this quite extensively in our budget when we did this. And we have several of our impact fees that we have not updated. And so this is one of our first ones we're really working on to, because prices have changed. And if we do not have this impact fee study, we can include. And so we're probably leaving a lot of money that should be collected from new builds that we are not doing because of the outdatedness. So. Any discussion on this at all? Okay, okay. So we'll move on to the next thing. And that is on America 250. So next year, July 4th, 2026. Oh, I'm, well, that we haven't had an amended agenda that does not include the oversized structures. Yeah, because we weren't quite ready to have that. I'm so, yes, we had an amended agenda. Okay. Anyway, so July 4th, 2026 is the 250th year that America was made a country. And so along with America, Utah has started program that is called America 250 in Utah. And that they have done a little bit of a video. So if we can get this to work, it's just a short little less than a minute video that we just wanted to play for you that tells a little bit about this program. So you'll see later on the agenda, we will be passing or discussing passing of resolutions saying that the city is going to be part of this celebration. There is a $1,500 stipend that the state is giving to every city that is interested. It's not a first come, first served. It's anybody that has applied by December, $1,500 by the December 31st. And so we feel like this is something that Hooper would want to participate in. And we have our very last thing at the very end. They'll come and talk about a possible program that we might want to do. But some of the things they are encouraging us, there is going to be an exhibit at the Utah State Capitol. They are going to do a Walk 250 Utah, and they are challenging every Uton to walk 250 miles within the year. They are saying having us do service projects. They have talked about doing America's Potluck on July 5th, 2026 for neighborhoods to host gatherings, share a meal. And then we could also do some kind of a program where we have speaker services. And so that's what this is. It really is something to celebrate. So any questions, discussion on this? No? Okay, then we will move on to the next agenda item. The planning commission back in July had written a policy and procedure manual. At that time, it was given to our then legal counsel for review. It is something that needs to be reviewed by legal counsel and then also approved by the city council. I don't know if any of you have reviewed this policy and procedure manual, if there's any discussion you want to do on it tonight?
I'd like to review it a little more before we make a motion on it.
Tonight's just a discussion. If there's anything you wanted to discuss, and then it will come back again for another once our attorneys have had time to review it. And so you will see this again on an agenda, another agenda. But was there anything tonight you wanted to discuss with it?
Counsel, what were you discussing about them adding, so they're not able to put anything on the agenda for their meetings?
It's a little unique. And I need time to review it as well, but it's a little unique to have the planning commission where they're appointed body and as well per state code, they're reviewing body. They review and make recommendations to the council. So it is unique to give them the authority to planning commissioners to have the authority to put anything on the agenda. It's unique. It's something that you usually see powers for the council have. The council has the ability to do that because the council was elected by the people. They have the ear of the people. And they should have the authority to do so. So it is, it is unique for that. So my recommendation is that is something that could potentially get out of your hands. So my recommendation is to not have that. But we're going to be reviewing that and making some updates and getting an edited version. So.
One thing that was discussed when we recently had our conference with the Utah League of Cities and Towns. There are some training specifications, so we might want to even add that to this policy manual as well. They're going to be adding on some additional resources for them to do for training. But we don't have those yet, but that will be something with our new legislative session. So you know, I made a few comments, but if you'd rather wait and discuss this that are, does anybody have anything they'd like to discuss with this now? Okay, so the first action item then is the motion that I talked about with America 250 recognizing and approving of the Hooper City Utah 250 Community Committee. And we have to have a committee established. I have talked to, and we'll hear someone coming in a little bit later at the end. Daryl Sheets is one that has volunteered to be on this committee. David Craig has said he would be willing to be on the committee. Aaron Mon. There could be others, but I think we have a court that we could go ahead and do this, approve this resolution. And as I mentioned, this resolution has to be signed and submitted by the end of December in order for us to get that $1,500 stipend. So do any of you have any questions? Hopefully you all had a chance to read through this resolution. Was there any question?
I think it's a, I think it's a great thing for us to participate in and a good cause.
Any other comments or questions on, on this?
Is there a certain amount of people that are supposed to be on each committee?
There is not. Well, they did quite a, I attended the workshop at the, at the session with the league and there is not. They just, I think their main thing is they, they don't want to give a city the money if you're really not going to do this, you know? There's going to be some reporting, we're going to have to do, you know, what project and that, you know, we are going to want to do. And then make sure that we are. And so we can always add more onto the committee, but we do have ones that are already interested in doing that. Any other questions, comments on this? Okay, if not, then is there someone that is willing to make the motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number 2025-06, supporting America 250.
The motion was made by council member Wilcox. Is there a second?
Well, second.
Okay, the second was made by council member Marigoni. Any discussion on the motion? This is a roll call vote, so we will go down the row. Council member Hill?
Aye.
Council member Fowers?
Aye.
Council member Marigoni?
Aye.
Council member Northrup?
Aye.
Council member Wilcox?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Okay, the next thing then is a possible motion to approve planning commission request for the state auditor's presentation. We discussed this in work meeting about moving that to November 20th. Is that something you would, would still like to motion to do that with just that date change? Okay, so would someone like to make that motion?
I would make the motion that we have the planning commissions, to approve the planning commission's request to have the state auditor on November 20th, city council meeting.
Okay, the motion was made by council member Fowers. Is there a second?
Well, second.
Second was made by council member Marigoni. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next thing on the agenda then is what maybe some of you are here for. We hope you'll always come to our meetings. There's just a couple of things that I would like to say before we move into this. If you look up here, each one of us was voted by the residents. And each one of us, I feel like are trying to do the very best that we can. We are all good people. At times we have had a communication problem. We have an amazing community. I feel like though sometimes we have let our differences impact this council. I feel like though sometimes we have let our differences impact this council and myself, and those differences have impacted you. I have heard people say, and I have felt the same, that sometimes now when people hear of Hooper, it is an embarrassment. I still do not feel that way. We have an incredible community and it's always something that we can work through. I was hoping all of this was behind us. And like you, I don't know why we are having this on the agenda tonight either. I also reached out to the city council members to try to get some clarification on what this was about, and I also was surprised. So with that, Ryan, Councilmember Hill, and I'm going to turn, I'm assuming either to you or Councilmember Wilcox, because you were the two that had requested this to be on the agenda.
So let me just get some things out of the way. Number one, we've all been advised by legal counsel to not make any allegations or claims that someone has done something illegal without proof. We understand that, we get that. We're not making allegations that are illegal or without proof. Number two, we cannot discuss in a public meeting someone's character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual. That can only be done in a closed door meeting. The next thing I'd like to just kind of talk about is social media, public forums. I love the fact that our governor, Spencer Cox, just a couple of months ago, came out and talked about social media. And I want to read to you just a paragraph or two what he said. It's on Politico. Utah Governor Spencer Cox, on Sunday, this was just in September, called social media a cancer. In an impassioned moment on NBC's Meet the Press, Cox condemned the algorithms of social media and the impact the sites have on young Americans in particular. "There is no question in my mind," he said, "cancer probably isn't a strong enough word. What we have done, especially to our kids, it took us decades to realize how evil these algorithms are," he continued. A lot of us saw that, read that, understand that. And for many reasons, I fully support that statement, that social media is a cancer upon our society. And it's dug its way into our community. Just over the last two years, social media has become out of control, in my opinion. For that reason, I would highly recommend and suggest to each one of us, especially those that are run for public office, currently hold a public office, those that are coming into public office. By the way, Larry, I do trust the incoming three council members. I trust you and I appreciate you running. Thank you for running. I'm looking forward to working with you. I do trust you. I highly recommend that each of you that run for or hold a public office, that you get together with your families, immediate families, extended families, those that represent you as a person and as a representative of the city you represent. And get with your families and decide how you are going to handle posting on public forums, if that's something you so desire to do. Your family represents you and you represent the city. In this case, the city of Hooper. It is one in the same. What your family says might as well be what you say. What your family says and you say might as well be what the city says, because that's who you're representing. But that's, that's how I feel.
We're going to keep, Kate, let's stop. We're gonna stop. We're not going to disrupt him. Thank you.
So the question is, when you post something that's offensive on social media to somebody in your community, how are you representing yourself and the office you hold? Ask yourself that question. So those, those, that being said, I'll come back to that in a second. So we all know this fiasco started back in February of this year, when the city council attempted to shift mayor's powers to meet on February 25th. Many reasons were given for this at this time. The firing of our attorneys was the big one. Others included forcing the sheriff deputies to change assignments, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not going to get into all the details. If the other council members want to bring some up, that's fine. But I want to just focus on the underlying reasons behind all of it. And it was the inability to treat people with dignity and respect. You can laugh all you want. But that's what happened. I, I, me, stuck my neck out at that vote on the 25th of February and voted and motioned to table this action for three months. Recommending that we either bring a mediator in or that we have a closed door meeting or both, or some kind of intervention that would help us as a council figure out why we're at this point and taking this action. A vote was held after three months and I voted ultimately no to remove the mayor's powers or shift the mayor's powers. A closed door meeting was held before that vote. Right here, and we talked about people's character. We talked about professional competence. And I truly felt like we had gotten somewhere. I truly felt like the mayor committed to me and the council that she would do better, act better, say better, and treat people with dignity and respect. I was fully confident that we could move forward at that point. That's why I voted no to shift powers. Councilman Northrup joined me in that vote. The vote was three to two. First, yeah, three to two, but it had to be a unanimous five-person vote in order to take effect. Agreements were made amongst all of us, not just the mayor, to do better, act better, work together as a council and treat people better. If, if that's different, counsel, please let me know, but that's how I felt. Time went on and things were better for several months. Then, just recently, another election cycle came upon us. And many of you know what has happened again. It was as if two years ago, started all over again. Attacks were made against political rivals. There was division and hate all over again and not treating people with dignity and respect. Why is this okay to treat people like this? I found myself asking the question, why did I defend the mayor the first and the second time? Why did I stick my neck out and try and do the right thing if nothing had changed and we were back to February again? Wasted effort and wasted time for me and you to try and do better and work together and make things better if we were going to still just attack people every time a political election came upon us. Wednesday morning this week, I woke up and I checked my phone to see who had won the election. Of course, I'm very interested to know who I'm going to work with. Wednesday morning at 6:30, but the first thing I saw this Wednesday morning on my phone was an email from the mayor's daughter depicting the Wizard of Oz with Larry, Ray and Sherry. And it says, lame duck counsel, Thursday's vote look a little different. Hooper has spoken and they want these three quit fighting against them. And I thought, that's why we're here tonight. I thought, I wonder if Larry and Ray had even given permission for their name and their picture to be used to spread hate and slander current council members and mock the campaign, mock the campaign of another candidate. I wonder if they had given permission to do that. I doubt it. Again, back to dignity and respect. If you hold a public office, if you are a member of a family of a person that holds public office in this community, I demand dignity and respect from all persons involved, all parties involved. To me, that was not dignity and respect. If we have such great citizens in Hooper, why do they treat each other so poorly? I felt like mayor, that you walked back on your promise as we sat here in our closed door meeting, that you promised to do better, say better. And I just felt like we hadn't gotten anywhere after all that happened during this election cycle. This was the first time in 10 years of serving on the council that I felt targeted and singled out individually and as a council member. Dignity and respect that was agreed upon is gone. Moving forward is gone. Feeling better was gone. As long as I can help it and I am involved, no person in our community will be subject to harassment, belittling, or mocking by a person in city service. It is not okay. Dignity and respect for all individuals must be demanded. All city officials, especially the highest elected office in the city, should exhibit professionalism, dignity, respect for all people, but especially each and every citizen, whether friend or foe or political rival. Officials should be above reproach in all aspects of the office. Now, what does that mean? Above reproach means a person that is free from valid criticism, conduct that prevents accusations or censure. That is above reproach. Every one of us that serve in a public office, especially the highest one, should be above reproach. I hope that was clear.
So I would like to make a response to that. We are the parents of seven children. Six of those children live in Hooper. My children range in age from 39 years old to almost 50 years old. I can tell you, I love my children. I support my children. I cannot dictate to my children as an adult what they can and cannot say. They don't ask me when they post things. If you were to ask my children, I have said repeatedly on an occasion, stay off of social media. I have, I am no longer on one of the social media accounts in here in Hooper because it became too toxic during the election. I rarely am on the other social media account. I have recently started my own Mayor Sherry Bingham account because I felt like there was information that should be shared within the city about upcoming events, about road projects, about issues we have going on with our sewer, that I could use that as a voice. For me to be judged, and as I said, I love my children and I will always stand with my children, I have not ever, as far as I know, treated anyone with not dignity and respect. I have not posted things on social media. I have been cautious. Sometimes, this isn't always an easy job. I answered a citizen's email the other morning at 1:45 a.m. But that was okay because I was awake and they had a concern about a bill. And sometimes, it does not bother me. That is what the mayor's responsibility is. And I have had people say, is it hard being the mayor? Is it hard working with residents? It isn't. Because if you have a concern, then that's my concern. So I, I take a little bit of this. I'm surprised at this accusation. And I, and as a parent, and also now with adult grandchildren, I, I don't know how I can censor my own children. And in defense of that, there has been a lot of this that has gone on. My family has been blamed and it's interesting. It's never my children are called out. It is the mayor's daughter or the mayor's that somehow there's always been a dig into the mayor first, when I don't even know half the time it goes on. So I, I can apologize for me that you felt that you didn't, weren't treated with dignity and respect. But Ryan, that was elder, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hill, that was not me. When you say do better, act better, say better, treat people with dignity and respect, I can say, I do. I have been trying to do better, to act better, to say better. I feel like I do treat people with dignity and respect. Even if you don't agree with me, I don't feel like I have treated any of you without dignity and respect. And so I don't know how you can say I went against what I said I was going to do because it was one of my family members.
Because you liked this post on Facebook.
Okay. So stop, we're gonna, we're not gonna do this. So let me explain what happened. My daughter has a personal Facebook page. And as, and whether it was poor timing or whatever, I like everything on my kids' pages because as a parent, we do that. She sent this on her private post. What happened was someone screenshotted it off of her private post and then added it to other social media accounts. I, but I didn't know she had sent it to all of you. I didn't, correct? Did any of you get this from me?
I got an email from.
But not from me?
I got an email though.
Yes. But did any of you get one from me? Did I create this picture? So even if I liked something on my daughter's personal page, does not mean that I sent that to any of you. So again, you cannot hold me responsible to the point that you have an ordinance to remove the mayor's powers because of something that a member of my family sent to you in an email. And, and I don't know about any of you, but as a 70-year-old mom, I no longer can put my 50-year-old daughter in timeout. I am sorry, she is an adult. So she is accountable for her own actions. I, so I think this is pretty drastic based on an email you received, not from me.
And the email was, was received after we had posted the agenda. This, this action was taken before this email came out. This email came out Wednesday morning. The, the item on the agenda was posted way before that. And it has nothing to do with it. It was just confirmation of what had already happened.
So again, I'm asking the question, like I mentioned right to begin with, we, we were all elected. I was elected to be the mayor of Hooper. I'm not saying I have always done everything right. I have learned and I have tried. I have learned and I have tried and I feel like I have tried as hard as anyone. So to have an ordinance to remove the mayor's powers because of something I didn't do, isn't that guilt by association? And I, I don't know that that is even right.
Okay, um. Yeah, here we go. First of all, just to address some of that, I heard some, some concerns from all you and, and I do appreciate your concerns. I legitimately do. Um, first of all, we're not changing the form of government. This was set up evidently by Mr. Part of Mark Wayman and his.
Gonna say anything in the audience.
And it's, it's a mechanism. It's a check and balance in our form of government. It's, it's to keep everybody in check. And this is not about a family feud. Yes, we were elected to do a job and I intend to do that till December thirty first at, at midnight. Uh, there's no string pollings, Mr. Wayman. No one's pulling my string. I call it like I see it and it's not out of spite. I know you guys want transparency and accountability. So I'll tell you a little bit about kind of what's going on in the city. And this isn't about character, anything like that, or any allegations. I, I voted for this in February twenty fifth. And so I stand by that and, and again in June, I stand by that. If you want to hear my comments, you're more than welcome to go back to those meetings. And listen. First off, I want to talk about our publics, public works on our staff. Um, we have an incredible public works department and incredible staff. I see them often on Sundays out there. Checking things just this, just a week or two ago, I saw him out there. Um, they do an awful lot for very, how very few they are. And so I do appreciate them. Uh, recently we've had a tremendous turnover with according to our size, tremendous turnover employees. Um, and that's where my fear lies. Uh, we've had three city recorders. I was on the planning commission for two years prior to this four year. Appoint or, uh, uh, council term. There you go. Thank you. And I've seen three, three of them come and go. And we're a great training ground for other cities and other entities for Davis County, Leighton City. We do a tremendous job of training people. We have a hard time keeping them. I'm very concerned about us being able to attack, attract new talent. We've as a, as a council, we've approved positions and funding for I think two or three new positions we can't fill. And it's, you know, you wonder why. And I know why. I, I speak with the staff often and I kinda, I, for the last year or so, I've kind of noticed that the morale is not where it needs to be. And I intend to do something about it. I'll give you an example for our sewer, our sewer system is a unique, is a unique component of, of everything we do and operate. There's one guy that's proficient in that, one guy. There's another guy that could jump in, in an emergency and, and maybe handle some things. Those two guys have been approached by other entities and offered other jobs. So what's the ramifications if those two guys leave? You know, we're going to be in a world of crap. And that, and that's the facts. So I, I am very concerned about our public works and about our staff and about the direction it's going. We need to protect these people and we need to, uh, make sure we create an environment where they feel they, they can thrive and we need to attract new employees. We can't do that. One of the, one of the roles, one of the responsibilities that the city council would like to have responsibility over is the, are the employees. And that's one of them. And I truly believe we need to step in. Hooper City's got a couple of flat tires. We need to stop, take a pause, clear the runway and look and reevaluate what we're doing. It's not working. We gotta do something else. We gotta create an incentive. We, we gotta reach out to these workers and find out what the problem is. It's where the rubber meets the road. We talk about building infrastructure. I'll tell you what we gotta build first is we gotta build a group of employees that can handle the infrastructure. If the infrastructure is not going to happen. Growth is coming for sure. But we're going about it the wrong way. We're building the roof before the foundation. We got, well, we gotta have this and this and that. We gotta have people. That's where the city strength is in the people. And these, these workers that we have, we need to retain them. And we need to get more too. We need to have a system where we can train up. So we have two or three people. Uh, that are proficient in the sewer system. The other, the other thing is the budget. The notion's gone around. I don't know who started the rumor that we're going bankrupt. We're going to go back to Weber County. That's a bunch of garbage. It's not true. We're not rich by any means, but that's not going to happen. We have balanced, had a balanced budget forever. About two and a half years ago, you were probably had an unwelcome thing on your bill where we approved, all of us up here, uh, was under Dell's administration. So there's some council members that are no longer with us. We approved the utility tax. And we're really the only city in Weber County and yeah, there might've been one other that didn't have that. And we felt it would be a a good opportunity for us to build up our, our public works department. The only thing that we earmarked was a five percent savings for the, for an emergency fund. So this council approved that. As we get doing the budget, it, it was like we had to reapprove it three or four times. We, we got, we fought and fought and like finally we got it. It shouldn't have been. We already approved it. Last administration approved it. And it's done great. Dave Harris has, uh, done a great job on the emergency preparedness. He's done a phenomenal job, him and his team. Uh, the city council then, one of the duties would be, that's really the only two I'm interested in is the budget and the employees. We need to have more say. We need to help implement some programs to attract good people to make sure our budget is, is good. We don't know where that utility tax is being spent. We have no idea. We can get some outlets going into the general fund. That money was set aside to help build our, our community, our infrastructure, our people. And that hasn't happened. So this is not being done out of spite, out of vindictiveness or anything. Yeah, it's kind of a weird timing, but, but I'll be the first to admit, I wanted it back in February. And Ryan was brave enough to, to say, and I says, yeah, I, I still think the city council needs to be have more say over hiring of employees. I know there's a lot of tension in the office. I know that. I know there's a lot of tension in the field. These, these people need to trust one another. They work with each other every day, but that is not the case right now. So if you want truth and transparency, that is what's happening. I'm going to quote, uh, Mayor Rob Vanderwood. He, he posted something on his Facebook. Or I don't know where it was at. I just saw it. And I'm just going to read a couple of sentences from that. Elected officials such as mayors or council members play an essential policymaking and leadership role. Representing citizens and setting the city's vision. However, when someone without business or management experience attempts to run operations directly, decisions can become politically driven rather than data driven. Operational efficiency may decline due to lack of technical knowledge. Fiscal mismanagement risks increase, especially with large budgets and complex financing. Staff morale retention can suffer under inconsistent or inexperienced leadership. These weaknesses can quickly compound, leading infrastructure strain, poor service delivery and loss of public trust. What, what I believe we need to do, and this is my, my opinion, I think what Rob said is one hundred percent true. We are, we are clearing the runway. We are opening up an opportunity for the city to separate those functions. And what I mean by that, I really believe we need to look at hiring a city manager that would take those functions that the mayor currently has. So he can execute the data, not the political agenda, but the data. And we probably have, you know, I'm so grateful every time I call and Morgan answers the phone, she's still here. And Malcolm, he's done a great job. He, his skill set could fit into that. Yes, they're expensive, but I think if we look at our budget and look at the utility tax, the intentions that that was for, we could figure it out and then we wouldn't have this problem. This is the way it should operate. Hooper has outgrown this form of government. We need a city. I believe we need a city manager. And so this, this will be a step forward. So there's no bias, no, uh, you know, hidden agenda and, and move forward to that. It might take six months. It might take a year. But I, I will say this. What's the harm in letting, in, in trying a different route? Cause the route we're on, I'm telling you, it's not working. It's not working. And so for those reasons, I, I will vote for that. And the only reason, the only reason I think I think these, the council members coming in, so we've got Larry Ropelato, he's a businessman. He ran on being a physical, fiscal, responsible businessman. Yeah, he doesn't want the responsibilities, but you know what? Mayors in the past, they weren't here every day and the city ran just fine. We've got, uh, Ray Hancock, his motto was common sense. And then we got David Craig. Leadership and obeying ordinances and doing those things and standing up for what's right. So I was elected, we were elected to stand up and do what we felt's right. And to do a job and I believe in my opinion, and I still have a vote because I'm not a lame duck council member like I've been called. And I don't believe any of these others that are going out either. Cause I will work harder than any of them, any of you. So that's my reasoning for this. It's not because I dislike Sherry or this or that. We need to go a different direction. And if you don't agree or if this doesn't pass, then, then so be it. I, I, I can say I tried because eventually you know, something's got to give. You know, if we lose, lose those two guys or even if anyone in the, in the office, if we lose them, that's an important thing because we're really small. And they do an awful lot. It's hard to replace good people. And I take value in that. That's the number one thing for me is these people. It's not about a mayor that comes and goes. Cause we come and go, I'm gone. It's about longevity. So Mr. Wayman, I appreciate you starting this city, but I intend to put it on the right path. And I believe this is it. It's not personal. It's not a vendetta. It's just about smart leadership and business sense. Thank you.
So there isn't anyone that values our employees more than I do. And your, our employees will tell you there's not a day goes by that I don't thank them for what they do. I started volunteering with Hooper City in two thousand and five. Now twenty years later, I can tell you there is one employee that still works at Hooper City. So I am the fifth mayor. Did all of our other employees leave because of the mayors? Absolutely not. They left because they had other business opportunities. They left because maybe there was a different career path they were going to take. And, and I can tell you, we do not pay our employees enough. I am the first one to tell you that. That we don't pay our employees enough. I also agree that we need a city manager, but we're doing the cart before the horse. You don't get rid of what a mayor does because you want to have a city manager when you have not yet put in the budget to have a city manager. I am one that has said next year, if we can have the money to have a city manager, I'm all on board. You're right. Not every mayor comes and works her full time, but I can tell you, I am almost a full time mayor. There is not one day unless if I have a meeting that I'm gone to or a family something that I have to go to that I'm not here in the office and our employees always know where I am. You're right about this energy tax. I was not in favor of it. I thought maybe there would be room in the budget that we could find money somewhere else. That money if, and we had more budget meetings this year than we have ever had. Let me just address real quickly. As a state of Utah municipality, we have to have a balanced budget. Hooper does have enough money to pay our bills. We do. There's electricity. Our bills get paid every single month. But let me tell you, as I'm meeting with one of our employees that is so valued. And he spent quite a bit of time with me today and he's over our sewer. And he came in and told me that currently we have no spare sewer pumps. They used our last spare pump. So in the sewer system, we have five horsepower, ten, fifteen, twenty. We used our last twenty and we have no spares for anything else. He said they have sent one of those pumps they took off to go be repaired. And he said, they will let him know in a week or two if they even can repair it. And if they do, it could take as long as six weeks to two months. And we have another pump in that same lift station that is in equally as bad a shape. And he said it is very concerning to him that there is not a backup pump. These pumps raised January from twenty thousand to twenty eight thousand dollars. If they send it to be rebuilt, we could get it a bargain price for sixteen thousand dollars. He said they have another five horsepower that needs to be rebuilt. There is a ventilation fan that costs ten thousand dollars that needs to be replaced. We have a five ton air conditioning unit in one of our sections and the vacuum stations, but we should have a fifteen ton because we are overheating. And why? Someone asked me, why are our pumps overheating now? Because they are getting old. They're not as efficient. And so we need more air conditioning. Controllers are four hundred dollars each. He said, let me tell you now the bright news. We have three lift stations that do each have a new pump. He said, we did not put money in the budget to cover all of this because there was not money in the budget to cover all of this. He said, and I can take money to go buy this ventilation fan, but I hesitate to take that money because what happens if this pump fails? Not everybody on Hooper, in Hooper is on the sewer system, but a lot of us are. And we are dependent on them. So I hundred percent agree. You know, we, and we talked about it today with another one of our real valued employees. We don't have enough money in our budget. We, we put in our budget to give raises, but you give a, a small three percent, five percent cost of living, but if our cost of living in our country is going up six or seven percent, you're still in the hole. And we put in there to hire another sewer person, to hire another parks. We, you're a hundred percent right. We are down employees. But I, I take, I, I disagree that you are trying to make this sound like this is my fault. Because if it was my fault, then why aren't all of those employees here that were here when I was here twenty years ago? And they are not. They have left for other reasons. One thing in July that we talked about was having a city council member come and sit in on, on our interviews and that did occur. We did recently hire a new employee. I was not in on the interview. Council member Fowers was. He was called. That is a change that we have made. I did meet that employee yesterday long after other ones had, because like I said, I relinquished then that responsibility to him. So again, when I read through this and you are saying about the mayor shall not have authority to appoint, unilaterally hire, fire, supervise city personnel or manage the daily operations of the city in any way. I think that's extreme. We can look at the budget next year and see if we can find money for a city manager. And if we can, I am all on board with that. But as I mentioned, when they brought this up in a work session a little bit ago, to me, top priority is getting another sewer person. You are right. We need someone else in our sewer. So if I am willing to come in every day and be a full time mayor on a less than part time pay, I'm willing to do it. If that helps out the city and let's get the positions hired that need to be. And if we can give them more benefits or more pay, I'm all for it. But we don't have that money in our budget right now.
But I think you missed the point a little bit. I, I agree with all that, that there's, there's a high cost of maintenance. It's the execution of, of the position over the employees. I'm fine. You know, you can do it. All, all the other things. I believe the city council needs to have control over the employees and staff. I've talked to boots on the ground and the morale's not good. Something's got to change. So anyway, I, I agree with all that. Those, that data that you have, but you're missing the point. It's, I feel we can do a better job than we need to.
Another thing I forgot to mention is there are always checks and balances in place. We have a person over HR. So if a city employee has a problem, they can go to HR. We have direct line supervisors over all of them. If they have a problem, they can go to their supervisors. The mayor is actually the last person in that line of authority if there is a problem. And I can tell you, we, we talk all the time. Is there any problems I should be aware of? And I have not been aware of any problems. So again, I think that you are to say this, that I am somehow handling this wrong is incorrect. Is there any other discussion on this before a motion will be made?
I'll, I'll just bring up one more thing. The Utah state code, section 10 dash 3B dash 303 allows a city council to take this action in any city in the state of Utah. Um, and I just want to read this one section. Says the council in a municipality operating under a six-member council form of government, may subject to subsections one C and two, adopt an ordinance, doing one of two things, A, removing from the mayor, any power, duty, or function of the mayor under section, 10, 3, 104, or reinstate to the mayor, any power, duty, or function, previously removed under subsection, A. And so, Bryce, you mentioned the employees. I know, I know, we've talked about that many times. This ordinance allows us to remove any power, duty, or function. Doesn't have to be all. It can be one, two, three, four, five, or six, or all, correct? Or at some point down the road, it allows us to reinstate to the mayor, those same things that we removed for whatever reason. So I, I just wanted to clarify the, language in the code, the state code, that allows us to do our job. And so I, I guess I'm looking for some discussion on that idea from the council, you know? Is that even a possibility that you would focus on one or two sections or one or two items, one or two powers? Or, or all?
I, like I said, I'm okay. I, I, I really think there's a deficiency with leadership amongst our employees. That's really the only one I'm interested in. Budgetary, I think we need to make sure money is going where it should go and we need to start planning for a city planner. But all the other stuff is, is great, but I think I truly believe that we need to get involved with the employees more and we need to build, build them back up. Cause I, you can say whatever you want, Sherry, but I've spoken with the people and the morale is not where it should be. Period. And that's it. So something's got to change. Something's got to give.
I, I agree that I, I don't see a reason to take everything away. I, I think just the things that we are mostly concerned about would be fine. I, I, I think that we need to do that as a responsibility that we're, we're, that we're that we're responsible for doing that.
You know, uh, at the beginning of the year, we have, we approve and go through the different assignments that each council member will have. My feeling tonight is, is that if we were to meet, back here on the 20th of November, having removed all the assignments tonight, then we give back to the mayor on the 20th of November, those assignments that we feel would be appropriate in order to help us move forward.
We're going to keep it.
Well, maybe appropriate wasn't the exact words, but there are those, the correct word, but there are those assignments that maybe you, there are those things that there are concerns, we have concerns with. I have the very same concerns with. But I'd like to take the time between now and our next council meeting to review those. My opinion tonight is that we do remove the powers of the mayor. Just like we have authority to do. And then we assign back to you as we would give assignments to the other members of the council as well.
So I guess my question to that is, then how do I ever prove to you that I am doing what I am supposed to do? Because when we met in July and when council member Hill was going over things we discussed and one of those he had said about was having more review on the budget, having a city council member help with the, the hiring, which we did. So I, I guess my question is, this is since July until now, what has happened differently? And at the beginning of the, it was talked about, if there's been anything I've done illegally or unethically or, and, and I'm, I'm hearing tonight, some of the same things that you mentioned in February. I've heard in other meetings in July. So, so what's going to make a difference, I guess, from November 6th till November 20th? How am I going to be graded then on if I am worthy to be able to get back some of my duties that I was elected to do to begin with? That, that's two weeks. So in July is we've been working on these things together. And then, and then tonight, what I hear is I had a family member that sent you all an email that had nothing at all to do with me. I, I hear that the morale of our employees isn't as good as it should be. I agree. I don't think that is because of my fault. We need more money. And, and if our employees are going to you or you are searching them out, the correct channel should be, they should go to our human resource person. If our employees are having an issue that needs to be dealt with, it, they shouldn't go behind our HR person to go to a city council. So I guess that's my question.
You know what?
Outline that for me.
That scenario has never happened. It's always me. I come in and I talk to them and say, hey, how you doing? And so that assumption is 100% false. So let me ask you this. Are, are you willing to let the city council, that we all five feel a need to do, allow us to have a leadership over the staff and the public works?
Ryan read the state code or the state, you have the right to do this. I have never said you don't have the right to do this. And one thing I have tried is to follow ordinances. So I, I cannot say to you, take away my powers. I do not agree with you removing any of the mayor powers. I won't always be the mayor. There'll be another mayor and I, I don't agree with this. And I don't feel like you have given any concrete reasons of anything that I have done wrong that would justify you coming in, passing an ordinance to remove the mayor's powers in a six-member council form of government. And I hope all of you have had a chance to read this ordinance that they are saying, I will have no executive or administrative power. You know, I have no authority. I, I can't veto anyway. I already didn't have that. But they go on and talk about other things. And one thing it says in here that any action, appointment, or decision made by the mayor that I had previously done, they can go back and undo. So does that mean that employees we have hired, they can go back and tell them, I'm sorry, you no longer work here? You're going to go change, well, I, I, I don't know. So I'm not even going to guess. So no, I am not in favor of any portion of removing the mayor's powers.
Or, or just for clarification, our, our legal team did write that ordinance. The, the city council did not write that ordinance. So that was written in February, actually.
Yes, this is written in February with just a date change. Yeah. And, and one thing about ordinances is it would be nice if when we did ask for certain things that are in the ordinance that, that we did know that that was going to be followed. That, that when we ask for something on the agenda, that that would be followed. That does not always happen. It would be nice if we had a working relationship like that. It would be nice if you followed those ordinances to the T. It, it, it would. I, I would really, I, I wish that was how it, how it was and how it had always been. But, um, it, it's not, and we need to work some things out. We're not saying we're going to take everything away. We're just saying there's some things that we think we need to work on. And, um, that is an extreme example of what can be done. We have no intention of being extreme. We're not, we're not out to, to just totally decimate the powers that you have. We're not that unreasonable. And, and we have just stopped. We're not going to do this. We have talked about ordinances. We've talked about this quite a few times and we had it resolved even in July. So I, I don't, this has not occurred. And I know you keep bringing up the one, we've discussed lots that the attorney had told us to take it off. And so that, that's okay. So is there anything else anybody has? Is there anything you have against me that is I've done that is illegal and ethical? What, what do you have anything against me other than you don't perhaps like the way that I have functioned as a mayor? What, do you have any specifics or facts or documentation?
Again, we've been counseled by legal to not make any allegations, but don't have a document to go along with it. So, I mean,
Going to correct you there.
Please.
Facts are always welcome. I have explained that to you thoroughly. Each, I've talked to four councilmen. So facts are always welcome. I did not counsel to leave out facts. Um, I counsel to not jump from A to C with allegations.
But facts could be in our head that we've witnessed things personally that aren't documented by somebody else, correct?
I mean, I don't, if you, if you feel it's important to share, then that's your, that's your decision.
I'd be afraid of making an allegation. So I wouldn't want to do that. So. Anyway, one thing I do know as a fact is that we had talked about, um, creating a, a department of finance, budget and finance. And even to the point where the council asked me to be over that department. I went up to the bank, asked to be a check signer, did all the things I was supposed to do. And I, to this day, haven't signed one check. And so something the council wanted to happen, that still hasn't happened. And, um, that would be, obviously it's a concern to the council of, uh, you know, some magnitude is our finances. So I, I would hope that I could fulfill that role that the council asked me to do as, as part of this as well.
That is something at any time. We've talked about that. Anytime you're welcome to come in and sign those checks. We already have four additional check signers and usually it's a matter of bills needing to be paid. You know, I know you did that one time, do the presentation in our city council meeting. We're happy to have you do that if you get with Kami.
I would love to, but Kami said the computer system went down for a month and a half. So she hasn't been able to do anything with it. So.
Yeah. So again, that, that wasn't me. That's a matter of you working with our city treasurer and taking care of that.
Yep. So I guess, I mean, at this point, we can obviously amend the ordinance that's written right now by our legal, legal people. Um, and specify which powers, duties, or functions of the mayor we want to, um, allow a city council to, uh, function over. Uh, it sounds like to me employees, staff is one of those, um, finance, probably the other at this point. Anything else?
So I, I think you're referencing to number four then, which is the section 1 dash 1 dash 3D. The mayor shall not have the authority to appoint unilaterally hire, fire, or supervise city personnel or manage the daily operations of the city in any way. All administrative duties shall be assigned by the city council. Is that the one you're talking about? I, I don't necessarily see one that talks about the financial in here. That was number four. And, and you know, one thing too, at any given time, any city council members are welcome to come to the city any day and help out with daily operations of the city. You're always welcome to come in. We have staff meetings every single Tuesday at 10 o'clock. Any of you that want to come to our staff meetings are welcome to come. Like I mentioned, we already have someone sitting in on our job interviews. So it's not a matter of me keeping you out of this. This is a matter of having some structure of who's going to be responsible for these things on a day-to-day basis.
There again, I'll go back to the employees. I, the city prior to your administration, they didn't need to be told everything to do. They, these guys are incredible. You give them an outline and they'll go do it. And that's what the, uh, public works directors for and the managers of the different divisions. And I know that structure is not working correctly for a fact. So we need to correct that. And, uh, I, I think they don't need to be micromanaged.
They are not micromanaged. As I already mentioned before, every department has a head. We have a public works director. We have a parks director. We have a road supervisor. We have, who am I missing? Sewer. And we have an office manager. So I, I don't know where you are getting the impression that I am micromanaging our employees. I'm not. I am here helping when I can be of assistance. It's not micromanaging. Well, I, I, we've already been here a long time and we have one more item on our agenda. So does anybody have anything else they want to bring up? Any illegal and ethical, any facts for anything against me? If not, then what kind of motion did you want to make?
I think we've talked about the facts and the reasons why for an hour and a half, you know? We can, we can go back.
Can we please have it quiet in the audience?
Go back to why the attorneys were fired in February, if you want to, you know? We can go back to why the sheriff's office was, had to reassign their deputies. You know, we can go back to those facts, but, um, I think.
And we, we, we were misled or lied to as well. That's a fact.
If you don't give exactness, I, I don't know what you're talking about. When you brought up before about sheriffs being reassigned. Um, and we spent hours talking about this with the attorney and I, I guess this is my thinking. So you brought up, there were concerns in February and we tabled it. And that was based upon having a closed door meeting. I had wanted to have a mediator, had a mediator scheduled twice and that was canceled. We had a three-hour closed door meeting that at the time you felt like it was something that was worthwhile. So in July, we met and it was said, we've been working on these things. They're going better. I guess specifically to me then, what's the difference that's happened between July and now? I, I, I don't know.
It's from February till now, or actually from 20, 20th, January 2024 or 2023 till now. Anyway, we're not going to go there. I'll, I'll just go ahead and make the motion that we adopt ordinance number O dash 2025 dash four, pursuant to state code 10 dash 3B dash 303 that allows the city council to remove from the mayor, any power, duty, or function of the mayor under section 10, 3B dash 104. The sections we would like to remove are authority over the employees of Hooper City and authority over the finances of Hooper City.
Is the Is the finances, are they listed here, or that's something you're going to do in addition?
Thank you. And I I would also motion to task our legal uh team to um rewrite ordinance twenty twenty-five dash four to to state those two things only.
Okay, I've been silent. I have a question on all of this. As the powers shift, do we work alongside the mayor? Do we take over and the mayor is no longer involved? Because I believe as the citizens have said, they wanted the transparency for this, I believe um from February, July, all such, that's what we were asking of the mayor to us, was the transparency of things that are going on with employees, things that are going on with finances, and the other things that we discussed. So if we make this motion, how does that? How do we restart? How do we all of a sudden shift and then have those people, you know, who takes this position, who takes that position? How does that even work? Because then that, if that's something that's voted on again, I guess I'm just unfamiliar with actually how this shifting of powers what can go forward, and then how does it come back? And then also it's been discussed twice, and that's all I was hoping for tonight, was a good discussion about it, because I do think more transparent transparency is still needed between going on, things that go on um in the big, in the big picture of hiring, finances, budgets, any of those things. We we do get information about a lot of things. Um we get told about the upcoming events, we get told about a few things here and there. But I do think a lot of the times we feel we're in the dark about major decisions. And maybe, and that was the reason I said no the last time on shifting the powers, because I thought, well, first of all, I don't want to take on a mayor's powers. And second of all, I just want to know if we could do better. And if the, some of the council members feel like this is, hasn't gone better, then that, that's why we're addressing it tonight. Um but I am still unsure how that transition works for moving the powers to the mayor to us and then back again. And I do agree, it's a strange time to do it, where we're, the voting is all changed for this coming year. But I just, I guess I do need clarification on what the plan is if you shift the powers.
So so the state code is pretty clear that it's um the five-member council that the powers are shifted to. It's not just one person individually, it's the the council as a whole that assumes the powers. The council can make assignments if they so deem, you know, for whatever you know, duties are necessary, just like we currently do, you know, somebody goes with the fire board, something, you know, on and on and on. Um and so those duties can include uh supervisory uh duties over employees and finance supervisory duties over that. So um and to answer your question about reinstating, if the council so deems at some point to bring those back to the mayor, the same code allows that to happen. Or, like we've talked about tonight, possibly hiring a city manager that would take over the supervisory duties of the employees anyway.
Okay, thank you.
So you made a motion, right?
I did.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so the motion was made by Councilmember Hill to remove the mayor's powers in a six-member council form of government specifically with having to do with, is it this whole entire section? Section four, you're you're going to rewrite?
We're going to rewrite the whole ordinance to only include those two things. It it's similar to section uh four, yes, but we're going to have to add the finance section because it's not in there.
Okay, so the the motion was made then to have the attorneys rewrite ordinance number two zero two five four, put my glasses on so I can see, um which will only include having to do with employees and having to do with finances. So if they do that, do you need to write that ordinance and bring it back for them to review it before they make the motion, or how will they know what?
I would say so, yes.
So we need a table then probably for tonight until this motion is, till this is rewritten?
Correct.
Okay, so then we need then a motion to table the shifting of the mayor's powers.
Mayor, can I have a brief?
With me?
Uh no, not with you. I'm going to go out for a minute. I'll call you back. I'll come back, okay?
Okay, so if you want us to, so we will move on to the next, can we move on to the next agenda item? Is that all right? We can move on? Okay, okay. We are going to move on to the next agenda item then, and this is on Reefs Across America. And we have Daryl Sheets that is going to come up and talk to us about this particular, and I saw him come in. Is he still here? Oh, yes, okay, yes. Come up and tell us the information on this important program.
For some, who's ready for something a little more exciting? Okay, um thanks for the opportunity to talk about uh uh a great opportunity to uh for the community to serve in the uh, to serve our veterans. Uh Reefs Across America is uh something that's been, it's a nonprofit organization, it's been around for a number of years. Um we uh tried to do this a couple of years ago, it didn't quite uh come to fruition, so we're hoping that this year it will. Um Reefs Across America is a nonprofit organization that uh places a wreath on every veteran's grave all across the country, actually abroad, and actually at sea as well. Um it's all done by donor money, uh so there's little to no cost to the city. Uh it is all volunteers. So Reefs Across America uh receives no government funding. Uh and they recruit basically volunteers and organizers, and I have volunteered to be the organizer uh for Hooper City Cemetery. Uh and uh from their website, I'll just just quickly, it says the core mission is to remember, honor, and teach. So in all that we do, we strive to fulfill uh these core uh values by teaching, remembering, and honoring. Uh this year, the National Reefs Across America Day is December thirteenth, it's always in December. Uh they choose the day, we can choose to not do it that day or a different day, but uh I would like to do it on the same day that the rest of the country is laying wreaths on the graves. So basically on that day, uh about three and a half million wreaths will be laid on graves, on veterans' graves that, on that very day, and we would be participating in that. Um we have about four hundred and fifty uh veteran graves in the cemetery. Uh currently, that's a, that's a plus or minus probably ten or fifteen for the last number that I looked at. Um and this, of course, is all done by volunteers. Uh it's a great gesture for families, provides opportunity for the community to come together, provides opportunity for us to serve each other, rub shoulders with each other, and do a great thing to honor the veterans and also the families of those who have served this nation. Uh we'll spread the word through social media, through uh word of mouth, of course, displaying information at the city office, um at the cemetery, as we try to get people to sponsor a wreath. So the basic idea is uh we can go on and spot, anybody can go onto the website. Sponsoring a wreath means we uh donating, right now there's seventeen dollars a wreath, you do, you donate seventeen dollars, and that gets a wreath uh for a veteran in our cemetery. Uh we would love to to have four hundred and fifty wreaths, that's probably not going to happen this year, we'd like to get to that point eventually. Uh the the cutoff date for this year is the twenty-eighth of November, so we're we're short on time. Uh but we will receive as many wreaths as we sponsor. So if we have twenty, or fifty, or a hundred, whatever that happens to be. Uh the sheet that I handed out to you, we have our own website, so they've already, Reefs Across America has already created a Hooper Cemetery website. That's what that handout is, you can just see on it, has a website, so anybody can go to that um website and uh if it's Reefs Across America, the main page, they can, they can click on Hooper Cemetery, or they can go to our own page, and those wreaths will come directly to us. I tried it the other week, uh we've got a few on there now, it works just fine. Um the uh so that website is active and working today. So the cleanup happens about, the wreath stay on the, on the graves for about a week, and then volunteers come, remove the wreaths, and then we dispose of them. The only thing we really need the city to help with is to store the wreaths for about a week. Uh they come by volunteer truckers, uh they they come from Maine, all of these wreaths are created in Maine, and they drive them all over the country, and these truckers do it um out of their own pocket, it's a donation from them. So it's uh it's really a great opportunity for us to to show some support for our veterans. Um we would just need a place to store those wreaths for about a week, and then move them to the cemetery, and then we will dispose of them from there, so. That's a brief overview, and I'm uh happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Do you have any questions? We've talked about possibly even, you know, like you've mentioned, they do a little ceremony that we could.
Yes, thanks for reminding. We will, we will do a ceremony before each wreath laying, so that uh each ceremony has the, has a wreath that has a dedicated um flag for for each of the services. So each service will have a flag, we do a short ceremony, uh and then um we'll go to the, to the cemetery and lay the wreaths at that point. So the whole thing takes a couple of hours to do it. Uh we participated in a few, it's a great, it's a great opportunity for each of us to come together as a community and and do something neat for these families.
So does anybody have any questions on this? We had this as a possible motion to um to improve this, if this is something you feel like as city council you would want to be involved with. I think it's a great program. I've helped with it in the past when I was working at a mortuary. It gives you time, you can come in and donate money for your wreath, or if someone like you mentioned wants to donate it for someone else.
Right. Be specific to a grave if you want to do that, or uh you just donate a number of wreaths, and that's how many we have to put out to the cemetery.
So to that, that grant we talked about, the fifteen hundred dollars, does that go towards this immediately?
It it wouldn't have time for this year, because we won't get the money until after January. But if we, and we, that's what we kind of talked about too, if we just tried it on a smaller scale this year, and then, and then if we felt like it was successful, then next year when we did it, we could have that money and put it towards, then we could put it on graves that, we have some very old veteran graves in our cemetery that maybe do not have living relatives. So that would help us, we could buy almost an additional, well, we could buy quite a few wreaths to put on those.
If you go to the website, anybody can, just, it's it's a pretty cool picture to see uh thousands of wreaths laid across the, of the ground. It's a pretty solemn thing to do. Okay.
Yep.
Yes, someone's ready to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that, to approve the Hooper City participation with Reefs Across America.
One second.
The motion was made by Councilmember Marigoni, the second was made by Councilmember Hill. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Working on this.
Looking forward to it.
Yes, thank you.
Ready to give some opinions? Mayor, I apologize. I have a partner, so it got really complicated real fast, and sometimes it takes a minute to think some things through. Um we could go forward with the motion. And um that would be the law, we could still go forward, and then I can make some changes, but I, they would still have to be, the motion would still have to be specific. Um and that's when I heard the finance um request there. I think we need some specifics, so maybe we could discuss that on what those would be specifically, say what they are, and then we can come back with the actual ordinance, but we can make the motion today.
So are you saying we would make the motion based on the ordinance as it's written here, and then we would rewrite?
That's not what I'm saying. Um
Okay.
I'm just sorry to just cut you off. We've been here a long time, so I apologize. Um the motion that Councilman Hill made would have to be a little bit more specific, specifically with the issue with finance. And then I would just come back and rewrite the ordinance, but we'd still make the motion today according to Councilman Hill. And obviously, my advice is, this is legal, this is per code, has been discussed, and you have the option of saying no or voting for it.
Specifically? I I guess I, I guess I don't know uh what specifics to talk about, nothing. Oversight of uh financial duties pertaining to Hooper City, you know, budget, finance, incomings, outgoings, how's, how specific do you need?
So maybe there should be a discussion on, because it's my understanding that the council still votes on the budget, and there's a decision there. So if, is it just expenditures by the mayor? Did those all have to go through the the council, if that's what you're referring to? I think there just needs to be some more specific, um what's being taken away there.
Currently, the process with our budget is, yes, the best, the budget was approved and voted on, it was June seventeenth. Each month, we get a list of expenses that come in. We have included, I know we didn't get that in this month's packet because we've had some computer issues, but we have been giving you, providing you with a list of the check register. So you already are getting the check register, you've already approved the budget. It do, what's other specific? I know you want to do that monthly with Kami. It, is there something in addition to what you're already doing?
Probably uh counsel, correct me or uh help me um define this, but um oversight over the but the mayor's ability to spend um expenditures from the budget.
So there already is an ordinance in place for that, and that is something I brought up when, the very first, oh, it was everyone's very first elected, because we already do have the, that procurement policy in place. So is it a matter, because one thing, if you also go through, there are monthly bills that if they're in the budget have been allowed to be paid, for instance, like the electric bill and all of those bills. So I, again, specifically, because there really isn't any expenditures that I am approving other than ones that are just the specific ones that we have that are already in the budget. So is there something specific, or I, I'm not sure what?
Well, again, my recommendation to the council is to approve ordinance zero dash twenty twenty-five dash zero four, shifting of mayorial powers and duties to the city council. We take action on that tonight, and then all, everything else, these particulars, as we uh discuss them and review them, we, I know we, each of us have had areas that we feel need to be, we could do better with. And tonight, we were prepared to review this ordinance and approve it. And my recommendation would be that we do that, and then we could rewrite this ordinance as we as we review these specifics that you're talking about, or that need to be in there. I mean, the idea of just tabling this and putting it off, I mean, you know, for me to even I mean, the idea of just tabling this and putting it off, I mean, you know, for me to even come here tonight for the third time, we were, my thought was we're either going to do this or we're not going to do it. And we've, we've sat.
Hey, let's keep a quiet audience.
And uh, you know, the, the idea that because this has been really difficult. I mean, without us, we know without question in the course of the last couple of years, there's been some things that have just happened that it, it was, it did directly impact some of our employees. It did directly impact some of our members of the council. And I think um, not just with the mayor's family, but with the mayor. And that's what brought us to this point two other times and again tonight. And this is on the agenda. That's my recommendation. And then in the course of the next, next few weeks, I think, because we all go over the, we know what the assignments are. We do that at the first of the year anyway. Uh, or what assignments the mayor is going to do and what assignments the council is going to do. But uh, that's what's on the agenda for tonight, and I think that's why it was put on there, be acted upon.
Okay, so I'm not sure where we go from here. Are you making, um, we had a motion made, but then we needed more clarification. So that motion couldn't necessarily be done. So does that, does that motion, do we need to have that second? They didn't vote on that? And then if mayor or if council member Fowers wants to make another? Okay, so we did have the motion. Did you, did you get those specifics then, Ryan, that you wanted to put so he can?
Well, I, I guess I'm struggling with specifics. I would just say anything broadly to do with finance and budget in Hooper City. You know, that's, that should cover it, right? I mean, there shouldn't be any specifics. Anything to do with money, finance, budget in Hooper City will be under the oversight of the city council.
Which it already is because you approved the budget.
Without the mayor.
So is what you're saying then, it could be, because I don't vote, I don't vote on the budget anyway.
You could if there was a tie.
Specifically in statute, the legislative power cannot be taken away. So that um power to vote in case of a tie cannot be taken away from the mayor.
Okay. But right.
Correct. And that power cannot be taken away from the mayor for anything.
So back to, holy cow, money the water. So back to what I just said, anything to do with the budget, finance or money, expenses, income, et cetera, to do with Hooper City will be on the oversight of the five member city council.
Like I said, it, it already, it already.
Five members in the council.
It already is. You, you do, you are the ones that approve the budget. So, so you don't need to have a motion to remove the power of the mayor's from the finance if the.
Then why is the mayor approving expenses then?
Well, only the expenses that we are, are ones that have already been approved in the budget.
But you are approving expenses, correct?
Not, I am signing check. Is that what you mean? So, so you're saying, Ryan, you don't, or council member Hill, I apologize, you don't want me to sign checks anymore? That specifically?
That's part of it. That's part of the finance and budget department, is signing checks.
Okay, so that's one thing then. So you're saying then to remove the mayor's ability to be able to sign checks? And?
I didn't say that specifically.
Okay, okay, what?
I said oversight over any finance, budget, money, expenses.
Purchases.
Income, purchases, anything to do with money and budget in Hooper City. That's what I said.
Okay. Okay, and then there was as far as employees, do you want this number four the same or is there something with that you're?
I think number four looks good myself.
Do you want to read, do you have his motion then? Is that so this motion, but only to include number four and the statement you gave the attorney on finances?
Yeah, and would you read number four for us again?
The mayor shall not have the authority to appoint, unilaterally hire, fire or supervise city personnel or manage the daily operations of the city in any way. All administrative duties shall be assigned by the city council.
Okay.
Like that's fine. The finance one is just a little vague. But that's my advice. That's my advice to the council. Obviously, if you want to go forward with it, that would be your decision.
Well, do we have to reassign a resolution number then? The next one in order? Or this motion since it's, since it's not the one that's listed here?
I think this would just be amended.
Well, I would second what was read with the employees and council, what you explained and Ryan, what you explained. If that's your motion.
I think Bryce, Bryce seconded.
Oh, you've already seconded? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, do you have enough attorney then to get that written?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion that was made by council member Hill. We have a second that was made by council member Wilcox. This motion does have to be unanimous by all city council members. I do get a vote. It, but if it's unanimous with all of them, then my vote doesn't count. But anytime you are removing powers of the mayor, the mayor does get to have a vote. So we will start with council member Hill. Council member Wilcox.
Aye.
Council member Northrup.
No. No. Hey, stop. Wait, wait a minute. We're going to, council member Marigoni.
Will you turn your microphone on so they can hear? Council member Fowers.
Aye.
The mayor? No, the motion fails. No, stop. We're going to be done. Okay, the last thing on our agenda then is um motion for adjournment. Can, will someone make that motion?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, the motion's been made by council member Northrup. Is there a second? Is there a second to adjourn?
I'll second it.
Second?